Good morning and welcome to the November the eighth, two thousand and twenty-three City Council meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman McGee, followed by the pledge. If you please stand.
May we bow? My gracious Father, we first of all thank you for this day and thank you for all the citizens that are gathered here today. We thank you for our mayor and our city council and thank you for all of our city staff that put their lives on the line for us as we go through our daily tasks. We thank you for the beautiful weather that you blessed us with and thank you for the sunshine and thank you for the rain and thank you for all the good things that you have given us for life. So I should please bless us, forgive us of our sins and keep us in your care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from October the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Lynn, second by Curtis. Close the papers, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Caleb.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
I have the privilege of being the one to talk to you today. I am Caleb Matank. I'm one of the planners. Kyle is away at a conference this morning, so I will be presenting on his behalf. All right, we have one zoning case for you today. This is a PCD Planned Commercial District Final Site Plan Amendment located at four seven one nine Old Bullard Road. The surrounding zonings are mostly developed with commercial development to the north, east, and south, and then directly to the west is R one A, single-family residential, and are generally developed with single-family homes. Future Land Use Guide identifies the property as being multifamily. This request would amend the future land use guide to be general commercial. This property has been used as commercial property in the past, but this would, since the zone change is coming in, this would also amend the future land use guide. Just get that for now, I'll come back to that. So this is the aerial of the property. The building has already been demolished, but this is what the building footprint was. As you can see, they had their parking lot accessing both off of Timberwild and off of Old Bullard. Under their new proposed site plan, which is this, they would have one access point, which would be off of Timberwild, and they're moving that building further to the north on the property, so it's further setback. The applicant's proposing to redevelop this property with a new commercial building. The uses would be restricted to the approved uses for a planned commercial district within the office and personal services section of the Unified Development Code use table. So unlike the property that's directly to the south, which is also zoned as a planned commercial district, that allows for all C one uses. This property would be much more restrictive and is only allowing for general office uses and some other smaller personal service. That wouldn't be things like a restaurant or a gas station. Those wouldn't be permitted in this. I believe the applicant's current plan is to have the same tenants as were previously there. I believe Allstate Insurance Company was there before. I believe they'll be moving back in, so as a cryotherapy salon also as well, all of which would be approved uses under this new zoning or this amended site plan. And likewise, since there is commercial residential development to the west here and the zone is single-family, a type B buffer yard would be required to buffer the commercial development from that residential, and the applicant is showing that on their site plan as well. Of the eight notices that were sent out, none were returned in opposition, and one was returned in favor of the zone change request. Staff has reviewed the request and finds that it's generally consistent with approval criteria, and staff recommends approval of the zone change.
Did Penzley approve this unanimously?
Yes, that's correct. By a seven to zero vote, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this at yesterday's meeting this morning.
Any questions for Caleb?
Need to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Lynn, second by Keller. Any further discussion? Close the papers, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Caleb. Good job. Lynn.
Good morning, Council.
Morning, Mayor.
I am here this morning to give you an update on our Parks Master Plan implementation schedule. We've made a lot of progress over the last several years, and in addition to progress, additional projects have been added, so we needed to reevaluate our implementation schedule and get an updated version. With that, I just want to touch base on some of our accomplishments over the last couple of years and give everyone a glimpse of what is to come in the Parks Department. This is just a reminder of what we do and why we do it. Our vision for parks and recreation is to provide our residents with the active outdoor spaces that are well-maintained while continually to be fiscally responsible. We adopted our master plan and implementation schedule in two thousand and nineteen. We actually updated it at that time, and the plan is for two thousand and twenty to two thousand and thirty. We surveyed our citizens in athletic leagues. Some were online, some were in person, and some were actually done with public meetings. This lists the top priorities our citizens feel are important and what we took into consideration as we updated the master plan. Since this time, we have added approximately twenty-five new projects. This is actually what the implementation schedule looks like in our master plan, with every project listed under the fiscal year it is intended to be completed in, along with all of the specific priorities that that project meets. We last graded our parks facilities in two thousand and twenty, and what that consists of is our parks leadership team. So we take an administrative leadership staff along with the parks maintenance staff, and two of them go to each park location, and they have to come to a consensus. We take into consideration the safety, age, cleanliness, functionality, and appearance, and then they're weighted. The list, this helps list our top priorities, our priorities that our citizens feel are important and what we took into consideration as we do the updates. Since this time, we have added, again, an additional twenty-five projects. So we last graded our parks facilities in two thousand and twenty. This grading system is based on several factors such as age, cleanliness, functionality, and right here, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back one slide. Oh, sorry. Right here on your right-hand side, this is just a breakdown of what those grades are. That's a simplified breakdown based on the weighted scale of exactly what park was graded This graph is a representation of the scoring that was done in two thousand and twenty in red, and the scores that are in blue are the parks that have been renovated and brought up to a hundred percent since that time. So now on to the actual implementation schedule. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, these are the items that we are going to focus on. Faulkner Tennis Center. This has been actually a request from the tennis users over at that center for quite some time, but the fixtures and the lights need to be updated, so that way when they are playing tennis in the evening after the sun sets, there's no dark spots on the tennis court. The tennis center raised over ten thousand dollars in donations to help offset some of these costs, and this should be completed over the next couple of months. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, we started a new soccer field that was due to the need for more soccer fields in the community, specifically a conversation that we had with Texas College, as they do not actually have a home soccer field, and they'd like to use this one at Fun Forest. Due to the lack of funding, we were unable to finish it last fiscal year, but we are happy to report that we should get it up and running and finished, and it should be usable by this spring. We have put a great deal of money into Golden Road Park over the last year, and we have committed to help renovate the very last field that they use on a regular basis with decomposed granite. The Little League has raised funding to help offset some of these costs as well, so we're very grateful for their partnership. As you all are hopefully aware, tomorrow we're supposed to have a grand opening for Pollard Park. Pollard Park has been given a full renovation. We did a full master plan for the park based on the public meeting that we had. This is phase one of the master plan, and we are really happy to unveil it to our citizens. The most exciting portions of this renovation is the renovated tennis court, the addition of eight dedicated pickleball courts, the connectivity, the dog run, and a brand-new playground, which features some ADA-compliant playground features. The next project we are starting to work on is the renovation of Winters Park. Winters Park was rated a sixty-four on the grading system and is in need of some major updates. We especially thought this was going to be important to do it at this time with the addition of Legacy Trail Extension that will run through that park very soon. The first phase, we will concentrate on trail improvements, new playground equipment, restroom renovation, new pavilion, hopefully with additional funding. We can renovate the basketball courts and add more pickleball courts up there. There's two large basketball courts, so we want to keep one of them and then transfer one of those, transform one of those into some pickleball courts, and then hopefully add some additional play features along the trail. And what you see in front of us is a conceptual design for that. Moving on to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five, these are the projects that we will be focusing on. Rose Rudman Trail, we are going to do a creek stabilization study. Golden Road Park, we're going to put some more money just into some general infrastructure updates. Legacy Trail, phase two. Stewart Park, we're going to try to update the phase one implementation of that master plan, since that will be the trailhead of the Legacy Trail Extension. Master Plan update, the field analysis study, which is going to be an end-up study of our athletic fields and future needs. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six, Faulkner Park, we will take over the Miracle Field. We are hopeful that it's going to be completed by then, so that will be transferred back to the city to help maintain. Hillside Park, the soccer field on the other side of the park actually needs some renovation, so we're hopeful to get that up and running and looking much better. Lindsey Park, we're going to do a master plan and some field drainage studies. Rose Rudman Trail, implementation phase of, phase one of the study, and then Stewart Park, depending on funding, will do an implementation of that master plan as well. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six through two thousand and twenty-seven, we have on here Crescent Park, the children's bike park. Matching funds will be raised from the Tyler Bike Club. They actually are the ones that helped us bring the children's bike club to Nobly Young Park, and they want to do another one somewhere in the city. Lindsey Park, we hope to do the implementation phase one and the drainage study for the fields, I'm sorry, for the fields from that master plan. Rose Rudman Trail, the implementation of phase two of the study, and Oak Grove Park. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-seven through two thousand and twenty-eight, you have Fun Forest Park, Gasaway Park, Herndon Hills Park, Lindsey Park, some disc golf improvements over there, Northside Park, T.R. Griffith Park, and Wilder Park. Two thousand and twenty-eight through two thousand and twenty-nine, we hope to help with the children's park. The waterfall over there needs some improvements. Faulkner Park, we need some updates in the restroom, some trail signage, and then we're going to, again, partner with the Tyler Bike Club. Lindsey Park, the bike trail improvements, Legacy Trail, phase two, I mean, phase three, and the update of the priority CIP list, along with the Goodman Museum Greenhouse. Implementation schedule for two thousand and ninety-nine, thirty. These are the projects that we are going to focus on, the athletic fields, the city park, Douglas Park, a new facility study. One thing in our master plan is that we have a lot of residents that want a new recreation center or senior center located more central or south Tyler, because Glass Recreation Center and Senior Center are some north, and so we found that in our master plan study, so we'll take a look at that again. Pollard Park, hopefully phase two of Pollard could be done, and a median's master plan. Medians are not in this implementation schedule at all, so we're hopeful that we'll get that done, as well as we are going to update our master plan for years two thousand and thirty through two thousand and forty. We are really excited about the direction of our park system, and we understand that we could not accomplish all of these projects without the support of the community, as well as our committed staff, our Parks Board, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, so thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I will say, you know, we started this park improvement project back in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. Prior to that, not much money was spent on parks. And since two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, I believe we spent like fifteen million dollars on parks, and the citizens love the parks. And I love to see it continue on into two thousand and thirty. I love the dreaming and having a vision and not just stopping. So thank you to you and all your staff, and I think everyone up here would agree that it's an exciting time in the Parks Department, and tomorrow night will be fun at Pollard Park, and I hope you have a slide picked out that I can go down headfirst.
We do, we do, yeah. And thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Any other comments?
I do. Couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the presentation. When I saw where you said pools, so is there going to be another pool aside from Fun Forest?
That'll have to be in another study. There is a, that goes along with the recreation center. People would like a recreation center with a pool. That's in our master plan to hopefully accomplish one day, but I don't think that we'll get there in the next ten years.
Okay. So the next question, I saw a photograph of the Emmett Scott Park, but I didn't hear you say anything about it. Is there going to be some additions to that park as well?
Not at this, not in the next ten years, since it was completely renovated two years ago. At this time, that park was brought up to a hundred percent, and so after the ten-year mark, we'll kind of start going backwards and looking to see what needs to be updated again after that, after that point.
And then Senior Citizen Center, will that one close? That location where it is right now, or will there be an additional one?
No, our citizens seem to want an additional. The senior center is heavily utilized over there, so we wouldn't want to close it. People just want to see a recreation or, and slash senior center with a pool in our master plan. When we've talked to a lot of people, they just want to see something a little more centrally located so that they can, you know, get to it a little easier. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah. You're welcome.
Lynn, if this is too specific, you can tell me this later. What's in phase two at Pollard? Do you remember?
Yeah, so there's several things in phase two. That's why we're waiting, we're going to wait a little bit to actually implement another, a larger dog park to be added on, and then a splash pad and a pavilion. The pavilion is supposed to be, some of the funding is supposed to be donated by the Rotary Club. We've been partnering with them over the last couple of years for that vision. When COVID happened, they didn't have anywhere to meet, and they really wanted a large pavilion at a park, so that if something like that happened again, they would have somewhere to go. So those three things would, are in the master plan. I know that we got a lot of feedback, though, from our citizens regarding them practicing soccer out there, so we'll have to navigate that in the next few years to see what that looks like.
Anything else? Great job.
Thanks, Lynn.
Well done. Thank you. R one, Kedrick.
Mayor, Council, you had an R one before you. It's a request, the City Council consider adopting a resolution appointing City of Tyler representative to Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Under state law and agreement setting up the Smith County Appraisal District, the City of Tyler recommends the name of one of the board members, and that individual that we're recommending is former Councilman Mark Watley. This would be, he has served three terms, and this would be his fourth term in their two-year, two-year length timeframe for your term. So it is a request that City Council consider adopting a resolution appointing City Tyler representative to Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Any questions for Kedrick?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Keller. Any further discussion? Close the papers, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Caleb.
All right, you got the next item. I know my two items are not as flamboyant as Park's, but we'll do the best that we can here, so. Mayor, Council, you have item O one before you. This is a request, the City Council consider approving the sale of Tyler Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds New Series two thousand and twenty-three. As you all will remember, back on October the eleventh, we did an initial presentation to you all. Our financial advisors did that presentation to kind of give you an idea of what we would expect in the market, and we went out to issue these bonds. We did sell these bonds yesterday. I have Paul Jackson here with Specialized Public Finance. He's going to go over the credit rating that we got, like somewhere around October sixteenth, we had a phone call with S and P. They asked a series of questions. The call went very well, and they assigned us a rating. Paul will cover that rating and kind of give you his view as far as how that went. And also, he'll talk about the sale and the interest rate that we got compared to what we were expecting initially. And once he completes his presentation, he just requests the City Council consider approving the sale of Tyler Water and Sewer System Revenue Bonds New Series two thousand and twenty-three.
Reporting to Mayor, Council, and staff, also Stephen Adams, you all know very well, is here. He made me drive and also give the presentation. So yesterday afternoon, we did take bids, as Kedrick mentioned, very pleased with the bids. Rates have come down the last couple of weeks. When we were here back in October, we thought the rate was going to be more than five percent, and we came in at four point sixteen percent. That's pretty significant based on the size of this transaction. Also, we appreciate everybody that participated in the rating call, the mayor, and Kedrick, Tiffany, or all the staff that was helpful with that project. Getting a rating affirmed at double A plus was quite an accomplishment considering the amount of debt that needs to be issued over the next few years to accommodate the regulatory requirements, so that was significant. Some of the key factors that they mentioned is they expect the city to have strong financial metrics as you progress through your CIP, supported by rate increases and healthy customer growth. Also, they feel you have affordable rates, including the regulatory compliance fee that supports the debt. So all those were really important with maintaining that rating, and that was instrumental in the interest rate we received. Council is well-versed on the projects. We've got our regulatory and non-regulatory projects, thirty million for the regulatory and thirty-five for the non-regulatory. This debt is structured over thirty years. That is a fixed rate for the life of the transaction. Debt is callable in two thousand and thirty-two. Most transactions have a ten-year call. This has slightly less than a nine year, so that means if rates go down, you'd have a refunding opportunity potentially in the future. Closing is set for December sixth, so if this council chooses to move forward, we'll work with the bond attorney to get the Attorney General's Office to approve this. You can see the bids that came in, eight bids. That's a testament to, again, the credit rating of the city. Mizrow Financial is the winning bid, very close second bid by Bear, four point six two one percent on the transaction, so we appreciate all the bids that were submitted by these firms. The debt structure is fairly level debt after two thousand and twenty-four. The change in the rate from the five-ten to the four point six-two, that lowered total debt service by seven point two nine from what we showed you in October, a pretty significant change. So essentially around two hundred and twenty-five thousand a year in lower interest after two thousand and twenty-four. Sources and uses, the underwriter, they bid a premium. This is why the par amount is sixty-two five oh five. That premium, of course, goes to the city. You can see the uses of funds, cost of issuance, and the projects that we discussed. And then timeline, if this council approves the ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds and awarding them to Mizrow Financial, will close on December sixth. This is just a chart showing the interest rates. This is slightly higher than what the city's borrowed in the past. I mean, most of the city's debt is probably two percent or less. Rates have gone up quite a bit over the last, you know, year and a half, but still have a thirty-year fixed-rate transaction, sub-five is quite an accomplishment. But overall, if you look at the history of rates, it's still a low-rate environment if you go back to the late seventies. That's a quick summary of the transaction, and then we recommend that you award the bonds to Mizrow Financial. Happy to entertain your questions.
Any questions for Paul?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Close the papers, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Stephen, Paul, Kedrick, great job. So Stephen, since you just drove.
No, Stephen rode.
He what?
Stephen rode. Yes. When you're.
I'll drive your car back.
When you're next with the level that Stephen is, you have other people drive you and do presentations for you.
Good job. Thank you, guys. M one.
Good morning, again.
You're back.
Yeah, I'm back. The Leila family came to us earlier this year wishing to honor a family member they lost due to heart disease. They worked with MHS Planning to design a structure to place on the Rose Rudman Trail by Grande Avenue, and this would be similar to the cancer bell on the other side of the trail off of New Copeland Road. They would like to construct a small pavilion with a bench, a bell, and a plaque to honor those that we have lost to heart disease. They are donating sixty-seven thousand dollars to cover the entire cost of the project. They are also committed to donating additional funding if the project exceeds this amount, but we are hopeful that it won't. We are extremely grateful to the family for this donation to our community and the awareness of heart disease it will bring to all those that utilize the trail, and we feel it will make a great addition. It is recommended that the City Council accept the donation. Is this not working? Sorry. It's okay. Of sixty-seven thousand dollars to erect a new memorial heart bell pavilion on the south end of the Rose Rudman South Tyler Trail system. And that's, that's what it looks like.
Any questions for Lynn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second. Got a motion by McCellar. Got a tie between McGee and Curtis. We'll give it to Broderick since he's still current now. Okay. Any further discussion? Close the papers, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Benny.
Good morning, man. Council.
Morning.
Do we need to put you on a clock? I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. You don't mess with me. I stand before you to discuss a crucial decision that will impact the efficiency and effectiveness of our organization. We seek to change our ERP software, and the reason I want to explain to you why we're changing our ERP software. ERP is first to stand for Enterprise Resource Planning. There's nothing but kilometers of software that interconnects together and makes us to be more efficient, to be able to communicate better. And last thing is, why are we changing our ERP? There are several compelling reasons to transition from our current ERP. One is obsolescence. Our existing ERP was implemented over two and a half decades ago due to the Y two K scare, and over time has become really outdated. The other reason is service limitation. The current ERP limits our ability to provide the best service to our citizens. And third thing is the lack of integration. This software, because it's outdated, it lacks integration with modern software, so we won't be able to use analytics or any sort of system. And receiving a real-time data access, and that's not available, so you have to process it because it's A is four hundred, so you have to run the scheduled process, so we will not give us that ability. And last thing is the security concern, because the software is A, it lacks compliance with the data security practices. And the process that we worked out with the majority of the department, it really takes two years for us to implement the software. And we're going to start with mostly with finance department and HR, and then move on to the various departments, streets and local services, and then what we need to talk to. At this time, if there's any questions, I will get to that in a minute.
Any questions for Benny?
Yeah. Benny, what will the learning curve be for the city?
Because we are staying with the existing company, the learning curve shouldn't be very much, because the interfaces has just changed, but the underlying database is similar, so all the charts of accounts and everything else is going to remain the same, rather than going with a new company.
And then while you're doing the upgrade, will software be running side by side or simultaneously?
Absolutely, yes. And then we'll have a cutoff date. We schedule with all the stakeholders, and we'll say the data's migrated, and when they say they're okay, and then we migrate the date.
I told Benny earlier, I'm amazed that we've been able to make a twenty-five-year-old software work up to this day. An ERP system in an organization this size is a must, so even though some people may look at the dollar figure on this and say, wow, that's a lot of money. will be happy once it's done, but good, good job getting to this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Keller, second by Curtis, any further discussion? Also, favor say aye? Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Benny.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to the considered agenda. Do we entertain a motion to approve this presentation?
Move to approve or consider agenda as written.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee, any further discussion? Also, favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. City Manager reported.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. By the way, Benny was rehearsing it repeatedly yesterday to make sure it was short for the presentation, for the very reason that, you know, so that was for you, Mayor. Few, number of items of note, the first of which, the Glass Recreation Center staff is thankful for everyone who came out for the annual Fall Family Fun Festival. Rain did not stop the families from having fun. Many were happy to hear it was not canceled and approximately 500 families were able to enjoy the festivities inside the facility. A big thank you to all the sponsors and vendors who helped. The event would not be a success without them. You know, at your council meeting, at your last council meeting, you approved a major overhaul of all of our building codes and the like, and so as part of that outreach that we then did after your action is then our Building Services hosted a 2021 Energy Conservation Code presentation. And so the presentation was from Spear, a DFW energy efficiency organization. The event took place at the Brookshires Conference, Conference Center. The event was well attended by design professionals, developers, general contractors, subcontractors and third-party G-energy inspectors. The information presented included different paths for each compliance with the newly adopted energy codes that were part of that. One of the things that we have an interesting piece is, for our fire department, it doesn't currently have any females and that's been a big outreach piece that our fire chief, David Cobal, has been working on and looking at and looking at other ways and different opportunities to go recruit for females to consider as far as applying for the Tyler Fire Department. And so one of the things that they've been able to work up and he and our Communications Department is hosting an event for women from ages 18 to 35 to learn about the Tyler Fire Department and how to successfully complete the hiring process. And so our communications team designed a flyer for the event and they are putting it on Facebook next door in Eventbrite where women can RSVP if they are interested in attending. The event will be at 9:00 AM on Saturday, November 18th with a light breakfast while hearing from Chief David Cobal about what it means to be a part of Tyler Fire Department. Then the participants will get a tour of the facility, including the living quarters and then they will be able to go to the fire drill field to learn the steps to successfully complete the hiring process from the testing as well as from the physical component of it. And so we hope to see as far as with that, some women applying for our Tyler Fire Department and hopefully being able to recruit from that pool. And then finally, kind of a successful news of note, Tyler Transit. Tyler, y'all had also during the budget sessions and even kind of a, may have been at the last meeting, I mean before last, a presentation from our Transit Department in regards to just a number of the things we're having to work on regarding, regarding the reason we were having to increase fees and looking at changing of services for, because of the increasing cost that the city was bearing for that. And so Tyler Transit attended the recent East Texas Council of Governments and was approved for $150,000 to help with our local match. The funding was granted in lieu of Transit going up on rates or removing services on Saturdays. So this will go before the City Council in December to adopt this as a resolution. This will allow for micro-transit services to be implemented and still allow us to gain more data for future decisions in dealing with transit operations. So that will be, that was, we're very grateful for the East Texas Council of Governments. We're looking at that issue and coming forward with financing to be able to say, hey, we can help you be able to as far as put all of these decisions off for a while in order to be able to help your customers in the near term. So we're very grateful for that. I think Mr. Jackson, Russ Jackson is in the audience as well. There he is back there. And so we're very grateful for Russ and the work that he did in working with EdCog to be able to kind of secure that funding for this coming year. Oh, and also it is Veterans Day on Saturday and so we have numerous different events. We have the Senior Center has an event tomorrow around lunchtime where they will be having and then there will be also different events throughout the community, including I know that there is an event I think at Brookhill on Saturday or on Monday, or Friday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday, on actual Veterans Day. I know a lot of places are doing things on Fridays as well, so we're very grateful for the council for being part of that. And I have two veterans up here on the council. Anything y'all wanted to add to that?
Well, we want to say thank you for that.
No, we have to say thank you for, to you, but.
Well, thank you for remembering and so I say Happy Veterans Day to my colleague and then all those in the City of Tyler who have served this nation as well and we say thank you. And coming here, Councilman Nichols and myself speaking on Saturday.
Oh, there we go. That's what I was looking for. Like I said, we say thank you to y'all because of your service and we're grateful for that.
Thank you.
And I like to remind, most folks don't know this, somebody like Mark Priest or might know this, but the day before Veterans Day every year is the birthday of our beloved United States Marine Corps. Marines are always first, so we were born first. November 10th is the birthday of our Corps.
Here we go.
All right, where do we go from there? I want to echo what Ed said to Russ and to Leroy and I see Jamal back there. What, what you guys have done and with EdCog, the transit deal has just been a big deal and we heard it and we, we heard the voice of the public. So thank you guys for what you've done to help us out. So anyway, I want to plant a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we adjourn.